It's fine, it's all came in.
It's because he turned on his TV.
Ah, well, we're a minute ahead.
Oh, so we're.
My TV was on before, though.
We're blaming light?
Yeah. Just, just.
You know, just.
When that one went on, I shut this one off, I was gonna do it.
No, I don't.
You have to blame somebody.
I know.
Who's working here.
I like to send that to Monica, on that one.
And Monica can send it to me, and then I'll pass it back to you. All right, now it's eight thirty. Come on, we can go get that. Yes.
Okay, take thirty, we'll get going. First order of business is the agenda.
I'm going to move to accept the agenda presented with the following deletion of the sheriff's agenda item nine C, due to the fact we've not having the agreement ready for our review.
Seconded.
Seconded, very discussion.
I mean, can I?
Sure.
That is for the retirement rehire?
Yes.
I would like to speak on it if I can.
Sure.
Okay.
Well, yeah, what we're talking about is removing it from the agenda.
Right, and I'd like it to stay on the agenda.
Okay, so, because you'd like to address something when we, when we got to it?
Yes.
Gentlemen, overall, this is the first, this is the first case that we have deal with. And we've never seen the contents of an agreement. We have no idea what's in there, and for us to approve the retirement today under the conditions they're asking for, knowing what's in that agreement, I think it's short sighted. I'd like to see everything in front of us so that we understand completely what the process is, what we expect the documentation, and then proceed with request with full disclosure, because if we don't, we're gonna have to take action. If we don't like what we see in the agreement, we're gonna have to take action to rescind today's approval. And I think that's unfair to the employee, and, well, is that, well, shouldn't.
And.
My theory is that we should be having that exact discussion under nine C.
Right, and my, so, the reason we have it up, and we brought it to you, is that state statute says that you have to do a rehire, but within our return to work policy. It says that that really is up to the department head and human resources, and that the employee is in good standing, and the department head would like to bring the person back. Then that basically is just signing off on that, and then the agreement is between the human resources manager, the employee, and the department head about what that return to work policy would be looking, what it would look like. The reason we brought it to you is because after having looked at the state statute, we saw that in order for the person to be returned to work, we would need to have you just say, this person can come back to work, and then we'll do the other part, and that you don't need to be involved with that part.
And this whole notion that we don't need to be involved in this and whatnot is certainly counted to everything else we've done in county government. If that agreement, if that agreement involved benefits and pay, for example, we've signed off on that, and gave that authority to a subordinate, when that has been our sole responsibility for all other employees. And I just think that before we talk about this in depth, we should have all documentation in front of us. And then we can go through and see whether or not we want to follow through on this, because I'm gonna tell you right now, gentlemen, I want to have another meeting at some point to review our policy to see whether or not what we agreed to in the first place is really a workable policy for us, so.
And, and I would just like to counter by saying that what the policy does say that we signed off on is that the individual who would be coming back, if they were coming back in the same department, would be retain their seniority. And that's what it says. So they would come back at the same pay level, at the same benefit level.
Again, I think we're, you know, we're basically discussing the, this item now as opposed to the agenda. So, I, you know, I think this discussion would be better placed under the agenda item, and we can choose to take action or not take action on it. Discussing is the agenda.
Okay.
So.
There's a second position, it's called.
Yeah, there's a motion, a second on the floor, so we'll vote on the motion as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
What's, the motion that's on the floor is the agenda with the removal of ninety C.
Okay.
That's what's on, that was your motion, that was, that's what was second. So all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
So, motion fails. Is there a second motion? To adopt the agenda. Somebody make that motion?
I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Is there a second? So I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay. So the agenda stands. Public comment, is there any one from the public wishing to speak? Online? Okay, approval of minutes, we have the minutes of the October seventeenth.
Stoneington, you know, all these different directions, which we can't do in one detail. So I'm trying to get these kinds of things out of the way. Okay, so that being said.
That doesn't sound like a public comment, right?
No.
Okay.
Exactly. So, I'm gonna move to approve the minutes of October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, Commissioner's special meeting.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Unanimous. But we have the monthly report before us.
I'm gonna move to approve and file admission rod back update as presented.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Maybe you have anything to add, or Michael, or?
You have it.
Sure, yeah, if you want to give us a.
So, just want to review a couple of things. That, the scooter finish of the project, that's ongoing, that's come, done the RFP piece of it, and so that's, they're gonna make decisions here shortly, as to which path they're gonna go. There is a path where they may come back and say, they will come, like a regular report that we give to you and say, hey, you like roughly two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for that project. But we'll know that, let's say, in the next month or so. The second one is the Orland project, which is a while ago that you voted on, but that the grant round for making activity authority ends, they're gonna make decisions in December. So whether or not they got approved or not, then it would match, I think there's some that. That money would, that be allocated to them. So that's those two. I did want to talk about the county, county RFP, because we talked about it, we signed the contract. In working with MCA, Bank Activity Authority, they're going to, the way that they're gonna distribute this B money, this federal money we talked about, doesn't align with the countywide RFP. So we just, what we'll do is just cancel that one. We don't need to move forward with that one.
Okay.
And really what that means is after these other two are just, you know, decided, there's no more work, work to be done or need for that RFP to be set up.
Interesting, because I mentioned your own statement, I mean, two years ago, that five million dollars, we need to read through that in a hurry.
Yeah, in a hurry.
Because we're, it's amazing how that, of this pandemic. Regardless what happens, Judy, thank you very much, and very, very helpful, and we wouldn't have been able to move that way through this without you, so.
Very, very well, so we'll, we'll wrap up our, you know, well, private concept, private contract, you know.
We've set aside, yeah, we've set aside what's still probably over four million dollars, that right there. Is there any reason to specifically set aside two hundred and twenty-five of that for?
That's good.
Couldn't have been into.
Well, I wouldn't. Come back with, right?
Yeah, we should know.
We need something specific.
Yeah, my idea, yeah, yeah. No, no, which path they're gonna take, because it, there is no, when they first started this project, and others in state, it was a thought, it's gonna be another end, a grant round, and that no longer exists, that won't happen, they're gonna do something completely different.
I guess my question was, do we need to do that today, or absolutely?
I don't, because I need to get your report, I'm not sure, so I would want to have you go on some, it's not.
Is there any likelihood that that, exceed that fee, though? I mean, you're pretty much talking about that being.
We were talking.
I think Monica and I, what we were looking at too, is now saying those other funds are out of the way, which I think we had brought back in the last discussion, was you'd set aside like one point five million or a little less than that. To be able to, at least take the rest of those monies and move them out of the broadband designation now on that spreadsheet that we keep tracking, so that that can be done, if there's no need. So basically, you're setting aside what you have designated, approved it, but you'll just see the two hundred for, for Orland, and the two twenty-five for the Peninsula, and then all those other funds, which would move into the category as open.
And obviously, if we needed more, we just dip into it, just go back, just go back in. I do like that, because that kind of tells us what we have open for new projects.
Yeah, well, and just probably finishing up.
Yeah, I know it's appealing that you still have some.
Yeah.
A little bit of stuff there, too.
Okay, great.
See, because I got his cell phone number.
I sent you the note about the airport.
Oh, please.
Sorry.
So, yeah, so.
What is that?
That, the airport project. Went after two vendors, charter and consolidated, neither one came back, so I had that on my report. Consolidated came back the day after I sent you the report, with a quote. So we'll follow up with Chuck and Michael and consolidated, I know nothing is attractive enough, well, I would direct the county to go there right now.
But something's on the table, let me come back, of course.
Separate project.
Yeah.
Is that gonna require funding, us?
It could, if it goes forward.
Substantial notes?
There was some substantial, there was. I don't know what, yes, we're just getting tentative. What we've done, out of the way, to see what project will look like. The way it sits right now, it's something itself. In our, from our.
Do you expect to receive one from the other company as well? So this is pretty much it. So based on what I said earlier, then I guess we, you know, hopefully we can wrap this up when we're later, so we know.
Was that our money as well?
Yeah, so, yeah, I think that was built into that, plus like five. So I hate to mess with it too much, but hopefully within the next month, I guess we can try to sort of clean these up.
Okay.
Like a call of, you know, January one, or?
Yeah.
It felt like, she said he had chafed it, did about project, wondering what funding's coming from, so I don't think, there isn't, it hurt me to get. Cleans it up.
It does, we'll be trying to get that done, that person.
Okay, anything else to add?
That's it.
Thank you, Judy.
Okay, so we have a motion second on the floor, accept the report.
Didn't we vote on it?
No, we did not. So, it was seconded, so it was seconded. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So unanimous.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Oh. It is on.
Yeah, it is on.
Yeah.
I'm turning, just turn the temp down.
Uh. Is that working?
Yeah.
There it goes. Okay.
Great.
UT, monthly report.
Move to accept and file a UT monthly report as we presented. Seconded.
Moved and seconded, we have Miller, anything to add, Miller, or?
Nothing to add.
Okay, Michael, everybody's filled that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so unanimous.
I'm gonna move to approve the two-year window removal agreement with the town of Woffham for one seventy-nine through Fletcher Landing. Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Miller, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
How many, how many dollars is that a foot?
Yeah.
Two point one five, three point one miles, eighty-five thousand dollars. All right, so like, say.
Any further discussion, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So unanimous, concept approval for funding rebuilding May Cumber Bridge over the, over Narragutus Road Township sixteen M D.
Yes, commissioners, Evan from Nature Conservancy is online here this morning as well. Good morning, Evan.
Good morning, series.
Morning, and these pictures we have are of the bridge now.
Yes. You, you have pictures of the bridge, and then there's a schematic of the repair plan.
Yeah.
And what we're asking for today is just, the commissioners are willing to move forward on this, we've been having discussions now for almost a year now. So we're getting to the point where they, nature conservancy needs to involve legal to get the easement written, and they want to make sure that you're all okay with us before we, before they sing money into legal services.
Okay, so what, what we're really talking about is, is the the concept plan as opposed to the funding mechanism at this point, right?
Um. I think the idea is that we're willing to put money into this repair project if they give us an easement over this road.
Yeah, because we can't put money in it now, because we don't have rights over it.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, is there a breakdown of that funding, Melissa?
Well, what we've been talking about was we would fund seventy percent, and nature conservancy would fund thirty, but that is still negotiable once the commissioners get involved, I believe. We're, we're not trying to finalize this today, we're just trying to get you guys to.
With the concept.
Yeah, say that you're okay with the concept, and then when we get, when we get the legal easement in hand, then you will be asked to approve the easement, the funding, the construction, and then we'll go out to bid.
Well, if, if the nature conservancy is okay with that, in other words, in in concept, we'll agree to it, but, but not giving them absolute authority to, for us to spend seventy percent of the cost of that today, right?
Because we don't know what it is.
So, they had caught, the estimated price was eighty thousand.
Our share would be fifty-six thousand.
Yes.
That come from the TIF money, Miller?
Yes, we have TIF money for recreational trails.
What makes it easier? Okay, so, I'm going to move to approve the concept presented for funding the rebuilding of the May Cumber Brook Bridge over the Narragutus Road Township sixteen.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, any further discussion, questions? Any any further comments, Miller, or gentlemen from the nature conservator?
Uh, I think, I think I've got from, what I need, and I don't know, I'd like to turn it over to Evan and see if he's happy with this.
I think this is a great step forward, folks, and thanks so much for considering it, I think this is a good, good outcome for the, the county and those around there. If we can make a, a nice long-term solution to get over that that little stream there, so thank you for your consideration, and legal does, at least initially, seem okay with some sort of a public easement, perhaps having a term that matches the, the lifetime of the bridge, which in this case, given that it's a concrete deck, is longer than most of ours, I'm sure, I don't know, we don't have a good sense of these, but they're estimated to last more than fifty years. So, thank you for your consideration, and we look forward to working with you on this.
It sounds to me like a two thousand twenty-four project, correct?
Yes, if everything went perfectly, we would go out to bid late February, early March, and then award the bid maybe first of April, get construction started, soon as the road dries up enough to stand truck traffic.
Miller, is this construction similar to that, that conservation uses to, you know, brooks? Is it similar to that, do you think?
Well, it, it would be, I guess the answer is no, because we're using the existing concrete abutments. If, if it wasn't for those concrete abutments being in place, and we had to put in new ones, then the span of that would be much wider on that brick.
When it's, it's not cast in place.
No.
Yeah, okay.
Now, the engineering's been done by engineering firm associated with Derago Timberlands, who build a, a lot of these sort of concrete deck bridges around the state, and they'll, they can build this one as well, and then it would be installed by, hopefully, somebody a little more local.
Great, any further comment? We ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, airport.
I'm gonna move to accept and file the airport monthly report as presented. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Leroy, anything to add?
Nope, got nothing.
Okay, Michael, everybody's all right? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna move to approve the use agreement with the Civil Air Patrol and authorized to chair the son. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Leroy, anything to add?
Uh, no, there, the problem is, is there's, there're little C I, CAP building really isn't needs some work, so they're looking for a place to meet, that's what this agreement's all about, so. The CAP's been on the airport now since the forties, I guess, so probably ought to try to keep them.
Any, is there plans to fix it up, or get it out of there, or?
Uh, the plan is, is they're, you know, they're gonna fix it up, they, they're working on a new commander, so once they get a new commander, then things will probably start to shape up over there.
Okay. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So unanimous.
I'm gonna move to approve appointed Clifford Higgins to serve on the Airport Advisory Committee as the airline tenant representative with a term ending on twelve thirty-one twenty-four. Seconded. Excuse me, just a second, does that require a signature? No.
So moved and seconded, any discussion, Leroy, anything to add?
Um, no, the only reason this has come up is Barbara retired, Barbara was a longtime member on it, we just didn't have anybody, so. Cliff said he would, he would do it, and he's been around here for a few years, so he, he knows what's going on.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna move, I'm gonna move to approve appointing Tony Caruso of Martin Aviation to the Airport Advisory Committee as the Airport Tenant, Airport Aviation Tenant Representative, replacing Thomas Dunn, with a term ending on seven thirty-one two thousand twenty-four.
Moved and seconded. Leroy, anything to add?
No, that's pretty straightforward, you know, Tom Dunn was in Groton, so now that they've got an onsite manager, that it really makes the most sense, so. This is just clearing up all the, now we have a full full advisory committee now, so.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So unanimous, thank you, Leroy.
Thank you.
Yea, may.
I'm gonna move to accept and file the EIA monthly report as presented. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Uh, is it Andy?
I don't know, he has a couple, I don't know, office committees, attending for now, so.
Nothing to add from anywhere? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Chair for request approval of forfeited assets, State of Maine versus Rachel Potter, in the amount of seven hundred dollars.
Move to approve and sign the forfeiture in the case of the State of Maine versus Rachel Potter in the amount of seven hundred dollars, and for the funds to be deposited in the G one three thousand thirteen dash fifty forfeiture account, authorized to chair the son.
Moved and seconded, show. Anything to add?
Nope, you have the form there in front of you, that I just need to have the signature on, so that I can submit it to the, oh, okay. I just need to have that back, so I can submit it to the District Attorney's Office.
Great. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So unanimous.
This next item, gentlemen, supposedly, we put that in the wrong forfeiture account. It's one hundred and five dollars, it's not a lot of money, but as we talk about funding for, the budget for two thousand twenty-four, the drug task force forfeiture account is going to become key to funding some of that budget. And the eleven hundred dollars in sheriff's forfeiture account would be used for unbudgeted accessory, for example, and I think at this time and whatnot, we should be focusing on budget issues and not, you know, accessory issues. I'm just gonna suggest that we leave, we let stand our decision to leave the funding in the for, the drug task force forfeiture account, and use that for to assist in the twenty twenty-four budget. Does that mean we can take action?
Yeah, that's my question, is there any action to take, or do you have anything to add?
That's my point, is that we don't take any action, that we just let a previous decision stand, and the money stays in the drug task force forfeiture account. If you want to remove it from that and put it in the sheriff's, then we need to take action.
Commissioners, I just wanted to discuss this action, this money that was brought in, was brought in by the patrol unit, it was, had nothing to do with anything with being drug. This was a forfeiture that was brought in on traffic stop, that was done by a patrolman, it went in front of the DA's office, this was negotiated on the case, that the funds would be brought back to the sheriff's department, and those funds, we have that drug forfeiture for the sheriff's department that started years ago with a drug class that we had at the Blue Hill Fair. And that was why we requested the money to put into the G account, the, the G account that was voted on in October third, on the agenda. And that has nothing to do with main drug, yes, in the past, we've had to use the monies to purchase items like flashlights and duty notes, however, we've also used it for training as well in the past, when we haven't had enough money.
So, so you're, because I wasn't quite following this, this, this is here, because you're, we had put it in the drug task force.
That's correct.
And you're asking us to move it to the.
Sheriff's.
The sheriff's.
Forfeiture.
Forfeiture.
Yes, correct. And that was something that was from the District Attorney's Office, the group of the District Attorney's Office on a particular case.
Okay, is there someone willing to make that motion?
Well.
Or?
What do you guys want to do? I want to leave it where it is and use it towards the budget, if you two believe that you want to, you know, accept Michelle's request, and move it back to the sheriff's forfeiture, let me know, and I'll make motion.
My feeling is that it's eleven hundred bucks, and I understand Michelle's argument makes sense to me, but I'm not the sheriff's department, so. I.
Making a decision.
Well, I would honor her.
Okay, John, what do you want to do?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, then I'm going to move to reconsider the motion to approve and sign the forfeiture in the case of Sada May versus Jeffrey Allen in the amount of eleven hundred and five dollars, and for the funds to be.
How about?
I'm gonna just simply.
Don't use the word reconsider, how about just making motion that, move it there?
No, we have to, we have to reconsider the motion, the asking, and then make another motion.
Okay, well, that's one way to do it, yes, okay, we can do it that way. Yeah.
But I'm going to move to reconsider the motion to approve and sign it.
Oh, and then you're gonna amend the motion.
Right, then I'm going to, another motion to move it, but I'm going to, in the amount of eleven hundred dollars, and that's, that's the end of my motion, because. Seconded.
Okay, so this is a motion to reconsider. All in favor?
Aye. I'm gonna move to, I'm gonna move to approve the forfeiture in the case of the State of Maine versus Jeffrey Allen, in the amount of eleven hundred and five dollars, and the funds to be deposited into the.
G one.
G one three zero two one.
Eighty.
That's. That's the forfeiture account and for the chair to sign.
Okay, so that is, that is an amendment, so uh.
No.
Yes, because what we're reconsidering is the motion and the original motion. You have to amend the original motion and we have to vote on it.
Okay.
So that's an amendment. Is it seconded now? Okay, so.
Wait, when we when we vote it to reconsider?
We're reconsidering the vote on that motion. And so somebody has to amend that motion to read something, that's what you're doing.
So do we need another motion in there?
No, we're we're gonna.
Is the motion I just made sufficient?
Yes, you we're we're amending it to read that.
Call them.
Okay. And there was a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we need to vote on the motion as amended, so I need a.
Now what's the motion on it?
It's what you've read.
I can't.
You've amended, you've amended it, so we need to vote on that amended motion. Are you ready to vote on that? You understand what we did?
No, I I.
Okay.
Do I need a third?
No, 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 we're voting on that amended motion.
Okay, I'm gonna move to approve.
No, you don't need, we 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 voted to amend the motion, now we need to vote on amended motion.
All in motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So unanimous.
I know, I'm sorry, but that's.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, so we're on to item C. Uh, there was considerable discussion on that one. Uh. We, I guess Mary Ann, you could make the case, well.
So what I'm asking you to do is just to approve the rehire of somebody who's currently employee in good standing, who will come back after retirement. To be um an employee once again. What this does is this person will no longer take our health insurance, um they are taking retirement. Um, what the. What our policy says that you approve. Is that this individual shall be eligible to enter into a return to work program, providing other conditions set forth are met upon approval of the Human Resources Manager. After consultation with the department head. And the employee that wishes to return, retire but return to work in a um. Return to work, um the employee needs to be in good standing, but this employee is in good standing. And and it is determined by the Human Resources Manager with this consultation of the department head, which it has been done. On the employee wishing to enter into the program must request to do so in writing to the Human Resources Manager, and that is what we received. Um, Human Resources Manager after consultation with the appropriate department head will determine if the request will be granted or denied. And so I and the department head have said that we will allow this to go. Uh, the reason we brought it in front of you and it wasn't just within house, which is what we thought originally when we created and crafted this document. Is that state statute indicates um that you need to approve it. And we wanna make sure that we are following the law accordingly.
Approve the rehire?
Approve the rehire.
Okay, so.
So we've done the due diligence on the other part and we're just looking for you to say this person can, who is currently in good standing, return to work. Within this policy that was approved.
Okay, so refresh my memory, we. We approved the return to work policy?
You did on uh September nineteenth of twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so. What we're operating under is that policy that was.
Correct.
You know?
And my problem is, first of all, I I have some problems with the policy, I really wanna talk about this again at a future meeting. Problem I have, first of all, this is the first return to work situation we've had. And so this is all new to us. And this agreement. That Mary Ann's talking about. Makes me a little nervous because not knowing what's in that agreement.
And that's. Not knowing the one, the agreement, that's not what we have in front of us?
What you have in front of you is the policy. And that policy, where is the agreement section, Mary Ann?
We're in news.
Um, agreed terms for rehire is um four C. So the employee will agree to be immediately rehired as an employee for the county after their effective date of retirement. From main purse with the length of term specified in rehire agreement. So basically, a main purse requires that person to be um retired for twenty-four hours and then return to work. The county may authorize additional terms upon written request of the employee and with two months written notice. The Human Resources Manager after consultation with the appropriate.
Okay, I just wanna talk to there, there's not, so you you you. Uh, go back to that statement.
Somebody.
Uh, the the county may authorize additional terms?
Yes, is there any additional terms here?
Not this time, we're still in draft.
Okay.
That is my issue, gentlemen, is that we're going to approve. Hiring, in this case, hiring this this individual as an employee. And we don't know under what conditions we're going to rehire it, because this only talks, if you go to section eight. He has to come back, he doesn't have, that's another problem I have with this policy. It says he'll have the same position and seniority as held by the retirees. But earlier in this document, it talks about being rehired into another department. So in such an eight appears that if he goes to a rehire, he has to come back to his original uh position. But that's not true, because in here earlier, it talks about being rehired to another department, but nevertheless. It talks about the position and seniority, it doesn't talk about rate of pay, it doesn't talk about benefits, it doesn't talk about any anything. Of those conditions which we have the sole authority and responsibility to uh to set, and so so in. If you look at section four C, it talks about the rehire agreement. All I'm asking for, to see that agreement after it's completed and have an opportunity to consult on that.
And I'm I'm gonna just interject and say that the what will be done is following of the CBA. That is uh the contract for the sheriff's department.
Do what?
The CBA.
Well, here's the problem I have, and I can't figure out what's happening here, the problem I have is we should not be approving anything that's not in this policy. This policy talks about an agreement that's not yet drafted, so it's it's tough to take action on an agreement that's not yet drafted.
My point exactly.
Um, and but I what I see is that the agreement is is that we were going to be retiring the individual. And that the other part is not something you need to approve. The reason we brought it in front of you was specifically because of the state statute that indicated that you have to um hire the individual. And that this person is coming back at the same rate, so what you're paying them now is what they're going to be paid. Their their benefits, you're not getting retirement, you're not getting.
Who decided that? He was coming back the same rate, just I.
That was a discussion between the department head and myself, because that is, he come back at the same seniority of as a person.
So let's look at that first. Senior, employee entering program shall have the same position and seniority held prior to retirement, stay to finally hire.
And that's one of my examples, gentlemen, that that we're giving a subordinate the authority to establish rates of pay for for new employee, this is a.
But isn't that dictated?
By by the CBA.
By the CBA?
No. This is, this is a hybrid, that the CBA doesn't doesn't necessarily cover all the aspects. Because stop and think about this, this employee Dunn. We have an opening now, the sheriff's department, and the sheriff wants to replace, wants to fill that opening with a with a retired employee. So that that's that's not covered in the CBA, the retire return to work is not covered. In the in the CBA, it says that a new employee can be paid up to step step I. That's what the that's what the CBA says, and technically, this is a new employee, this. The previous employee retired, no longer employed with the county for two or three days. We filled it again, and for all intents and purposes, we could treat this individual as a new employee. Subject to the provision of the rehire uh the return to work policy.
So your contention is, because of section eight, Mary Ann, it says employee entering the program shall be, have the same position and seniority.
Correct.
That's what, that's what uh. That's what covers it on the CBA.
Yes. Well, see, what what that what that should say is that if the employee comes back in his original position. Then he shall maintain his seniority, that's what that should say. Because section eight makes it sound like he has to come back in his original position. But that's not the case, because if you go way back to.
They not want to or.
If you go back, it says an employee to another department earlier in in the policy. Which tells you that you don't have to come back in your present position. If the sheriff had an employee that wanted to retire and go to work as the Assistant Director EMA under the retire return to work policy, this policy would allow that. So section eight wouldn't necessarily apply. And we wouldn't want to have in that, if he went to the EMA, the fact that he was receiving top pay in the position he left. He had received top pay in the position he was going into, we wouldn't, we wouldn't agree to that.
So, Mary Ann, what you're saying is. I think you're both in agreement here. You you're saying that that should say if an employee entering the program is going to the same position. Is he going to the same position?
That is my understanding.
So the question. If he does, he just maintains his seniority, that's all he maintains, it doesn't talk about benefit, it doesn't talk about that. It doesn't talk about anything else except seniority.
But doesn't?
I think it's implicit in it too.
Do what?
Um, I think that we are saying, one of the agreements, the reason we created this agreement was to try to. We did have somebody in this person, particularly in this employment. Um. Period of time where we are having a very hard time filling positions. That if we had a employee in good standing, so we understand that that individual has been considered a good employee, has gotten, has not been reprimanded. Somebody who is considered good at their job, because that's what all their um. Their reports have said. This person says they've been, they've been with us for a certain amount of time. They would like to go and take main purse. Uh, which means we no longer will be paying into main purse, they will be paying a penalty for that. Um, and then they're going to be taking our retired health insurance and they're gonna be returning to work. This is somebody who we know, we wouldn't be saying if they weren't in good standing, we wouldn't be authorizing them to return to work in this role. And again, the reason we wanted to bring it in front of you was because this, not because of this policy, we felt we had been clear with this policy. But that there was a state statute that indicated that we needed your approval for this. So what we're saying is, we have somebody who's in good standing. We wanna follow this policy and we wanna bring them back um and continue having them as an employee.
Okay, other than the statement you made that they're paying full deduction, that's not true, I mean, we pay three percent, he pays two, the there's a penalty from main purse.
But he has an additional penalty as well.
But additional penalty is the federal penalty, but nevertheless, we're we're still paying three percent. And the rest of that I agree with, the problem is, is that there are other issues here that we have not settled. And is not available to us because we don't have an agreement. And we, you know, if we get to decide compensation level and benefit level, which is something we do with every new employee. We either recognize the existing policy or we set the new. If we have a department head come in today and said, I'd like to hire this individual and I'll tell you what the benefits he pays gonna be after you tell me you'll hire him. What would we tell?
Sheriff, you know? Yeah, I was gonna say, this this employee is unique in the sense that he's fully reimbursed by the state. He is the supervising agent uh down at MDEA, he's the only person in this office that is qualified to hold that position. Um, and Commissioner Clark many times has said that that is fully reimbursed by the state, so that that's the issue. Well, again, it has nothing to do with.
It has nothing to do with the individual.
Yeah.
For me, it's nothing to do with the individual, it has to do with the policy policy itself. But if you have an employee in good standing, we're following this policy that was passed um in September. Um, and that we're following it to the letter of what we have said and agreed upon. Um, I don't, it doesn't, it, to me, it doesn't matter who it is. Um, what I'm saying is that this is a person in good standing, this is an agreement between myself. As a Human Resources Manager and the department head, which is outlined within this document, for us to make those decisions. We will be following the CBA because this person is under a union contract um to returning to work. Um, and will continue moving forward with this person within this position.
And your contention is the reason he's under the CBA is because he's returned to the same job?
He is returning to the same job, correct.
That job is recognized as a union member in in the CBA.
Yeah.
Also, just know real quick, section three A of the agreement says that you would have to approve if they went to.
A different position, so.
Correct.
Yeah, so that's that's what I was.
They would have to, at at a minimum, you would at least have to go back to the sheriff's office.
And if if he did go anywhere else under three A, we would.
Correct.
Takes care of that if the.
That.
Correct, so if you were, so if you were going from register, if like if they decided to run for register of deeds, you know, or whenever, or to be part of that department.
And we would find that out through the through the agreement, the agreement spell out that situation. Now.
So.
I'm saying that we don't, that that agreement is critical to this policy, because that is what we need to round out every, all the information we need in front of us before we make a decision. On whether or not we wanna rehire.
Well, my argument, or not my argument, your argument is, Mary Ann, is, I think, I'll put words, so it's a question.
Okay.
Is your your contention is that. The agreement is reflected here, you you, as I read this, and I've read it a few times, you can't. Differ from anything that's in this policy, if you do, section A really covers, three A. Really, and C really covers that.
Correct.
Then you have to come back with us with an agreement, we know what the agreement is spelled out here.
So originally, when we passed this, we thought um that we wouldn't even talk to you about it, we would just make it happen and that would be part of our policy. But again, we're bringing it in front of you because there's a state statute and we don't wanna break the law. And then that's why we're bringing it in front of you, it's just as a kind of a uh a policy, making sure that we're doing everything correctly, we don't wanna break the law.
This problem, the problem of this policy is it's not all inclusive as far as the information that we generally would like to have in front of us before we approve a rehire. This doesn't even talk about funding level. And it's not specific.
A level?
Right.
Well, it's gonna be, he's gonna come in, this particular individual, any individual will come back at the same pay level. He is, he's leaving and returning um immediately to the same pay level. And we're just looking for um a break in service um in that December and coming back in the January. Um, so that they, that's effective, that has to do with main purs and their requirement for the retire and return to work policy. Um, so that's filling in their need and their requirements for that. Um, the individual will come back at the same pay level.
Where, okay, let's stop right there, please, so at the same pay level, where are you? Getting, because I think that's your contention, right?
Absolutely, this is.
So where are you getting?
It's important to set the salary.
So the pay level, the pay level is specifically what was signed.
In the CBA.
It's in the CBA and also um what is in the person's file currently at whatever pay level they are, because that is updated on a yearly basis or whatever with the CBA. Um, and so I can't tell you those exact numbers, the person has two different pays, one as a deputy and one is. And drugged, that just happens to be because they have a split job, but they will just come back exactly at those numbers what we're currently paying.
And I'm saying nowhere in this policy does it say that. But nowhere.
True.
What?
Nope. Go ahead.
And here we are, I personally disagree with that statement, that this is where he ought to come back for pay. So here we are, we've got a subordinate who can overrule my contention that that this has been improperly handled. And I have no, I have no recourse, because we've allowed our policy to allow us then to dictate what's gonna happen for the rehire. And, because it even says in there that the the H I director can't be, you can't read their their decision.
Well, I'm saying that you put me with the responsibility of making sure that whoever is hired back using this program. Um, is the person, is somebody we wanna bring back into our organization. Um, we are not. Um, we are not going to bring back anybody that has received.
Well, that's covered.
Right.
What, what we're talking about here is, is the condition.
I'm not critical of the work you've done. I'm just saying that you, you, you're not given enough direction in this policy to satisfy my concerns about everything that needs to be discussed. It needs to be resolved before we approve the rehire. It's because there's nothing in here about pay and benefits and whatnot. And so I'm just saying that if that's covered in the agreement, gentlemen, all I'm saying is just put everything on hold until we see what this agreement says and then we can vote on it.
Well, it does say that he's coming back at the same pay level.
It doesn't say pay level on the agreement?
No, no, here it says seniority. I mean, why wouldn't you, if you were coming back at the same level, why wouldn't you be coming back at the same pay level?
Pay is two different issues. You can come back, seniority affects a number of other issues and whatnot. But it doesn't necessarily mean that that's it. That's, that's, that's what his pay is going to be. And that's the problem. It's a random policy and we've got two devils in the details. So we've got, we've got to understand what those details.
Why, why would we want to bring him back in less salary? Why, why would we want to?
Well, first reason is, is that one of the, if there's any benefit to losing a good seasoned employee for the county is, is that when you replace them, there is a savings. You can spasm that payroll over again, working with that cut to top pay. He is getting top pay in the highest grade in the sheriff's department. We have an opportunity if we follow the, the CBA back to step up. We have the opportunity, opportunity to save the taxpayer a few dollars and whatnot. Still have the individual here and it's not like he's getting less pay. He's getting a retirement on top of the pay. So I mean, it's not like we're gonna cut his pay because his gross pay is going to be far in excess of what he was before he retired.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, one of the things that I'm going to say is that what you end up doing is that you are hiring somebody who you know has the experience. And so I think when we look at this retire and return to work policy, uh, I think the implications are that you're bringing the individual back. You're not going to be cutting their pay. This, anybody who retires, right, they want to stay where they are because they enjoy the work they're doing and where they are. Um, if this person.
I don't agree with that statement because I think there is a good chance for somebody who's been in law enforcement and wants to reduce the stress of law enforcement to move into another county agency and do something less stressful.
Well, they certainly could leave.
Well, that's right.
They could leave and then, and then they will leave and then, and then what happens is the reason we created this was to try to make sure that we had people who had experience and were thinking about retirement just in total, um, to maybe come to stay with us so that we could have that experience, stay with us within our organization.
And so. I agree with everything she's saying. It's not the issue.
We're not, we're arguing.
She's not addressing the unknown. She's telling us everything. She's preaching to the choir with these issues. We understand that. We appreciate that. But what we, what we're not getting is these unknown issues. And so that's why I'd like to see a part of our agreement in front of us and we can discuss this whole thing again once we have all the documentation.
So is there any reason why we would want to have the agreement in front of us?
Well, the, the reasons we brought it in front of you now is that it needs to be 60 days in order for this person to be retired and rehired and brought back onto our staff.
Because of the 60 day notice.
For main purse. Um, and so that if we don't approve it, um, then this, this person can't take advantage of that. Um, because when they wanted to do it, if they wanted to end at the end of this year and begin at the beginning of next year. Um, the, and again, the plate, the plan is that they will just step back into the same pay rate that they currently have. We're not changing anything. They're just going to go for 24 hours and then come back. Um, and it will be an agreement between myself and the sheriff and the individual who is part of that process. Um, I'm just trying to follow the process along, um, and not try to make it convoluted and I don't want to make it a personality, um, point in terms of this. I want to make sure that it is the policy here so that in the future, when we do have people who are interested in this, um, we can continue to move forward with it and so that it doesn't become burdensome on you as well. Um, you have hired me to do some of this work for you and it's placed, have placed that in my purview. And I want to make sure that that's what I'm doing for you because you don't necessarily need to be doing all those different parts. And again, the reason I brought it in front of you is that there is a state statute which says that I can either rubber stamp it and then the rest of it will be under my purview.
There's nothing that says we can't get a retirement notice and, and from an employee such as Chris, dated October 29th, giving him 60 days notice. And sometime within that 60 days, we resolve the retire, return to work, uh, uh, issue and agree to hire him. Now, if something goes wrong and we don't do that, Chris is free to withdraw his retirement notice. So it's, it's, it does not, our action is not necessary today because he can file his retirement notice and then he can wait to see whether or not we can muddle our way through this issue to his satisfaction. We do, he continues with his retirement plans. If, if he doesn't, you can simply withdraw it.
Well, we do need to take action tonight because he needs 60 days.
No, no, that's not true. The only reason he needs 60 days is because of main purse wants 60 days to do the pay for it. That's the only reason and whatnot.
So, so I mean, so I mean, that, that is correct. And we are doing everything in 60 days because of main purse so that we can follow their request because we're kind of working in conjunction with them. Because this policy, um, was working with main purse. Uh, they helped us create some of the language and, um, shift some things to make sure that it worked with their organization.
And nothing says that they can't continue to do their work for the next 60 days from the time they retire, uh, gets his notice to the retirement date and whatnot, while we're still waiting to get all the information and documentation that we need to make a decision whether or not we hire. So that our decision today to rehire is not affecting his ability to, to retire in 60 days.
So is that true? What, what, what issues do, what information do you feel you need?
Well, I want to see the agreement. I want the agreement in front of me. I want to see what, what that agreement says. I want to know that, that that's part of the information that we're going to have before we make a decision to rehire. Now, I don't know why you're resisting giving us this document because that's the only issue.
What I'm trying to do is make sure that, um, we have that 60 day for the main purse so that the individual who wants to retire and rehire has that ability to know that their position is safe and that they will be brought back in so they have a knowledge base and they can work from knowledge. Um, and again, what we will do is we're going to follow the CBA and the individual will be receiving the same pay level that they left at.
Well, yeah, you've, you've said that. So the question is here. So I get all this and I think we're all arguing the same point except Commissioner Clark just would like to see, wants to see the agreement, which is, makes sense to me. Um, I, what you're saying is we don't need to see the agreement because it's consistent with the policy and the CBA.
Correct.
But we are going to be asked to sign off on the agreement because we have to, right?
Well, we basically know. All anything I'm asking you to do is to take retire and rehire him.
I'm going to move that we take this matter under advisement and take action at a later meeting.
Your second. I'll second. So moved in second. My problem with this is that I, I think we could take action to, uh, to acknowledge the retirement of that date. Uh, and that we could, we could, um, under the return to work agreement, but that we need to sign off on the agreement because technically we're the only ones that can hire somebody. Is that correct? Is that true?
If you, yes, if that was not true, we wouldn't be here and having.
That's right. That's right. So.
We have, we have to approve employment.
Yeah, so.
If this individual retires October 29th, he's a law employee of county and that needs to be, needs our approval to be employed January 1st or whatever.
So, so with that said, it seems to me that we should, before we rehire somebody, we should know what the agreement says.
Can I ask a question, please?
Sure.
That, that, this agreement that we referred to is already memorialized in the form of the union contract. This is no side letter. This is, this is nothing other than according to section eight.
Section what?
Section eight, under sen, under seniority. Now, maybe the title is misleading. But it said an employee entering into the program shall have the position. So the intent is to retire at my current position and seniority and I'll be rehired. Uh, that, that, that position will be reinstated upon the rehire. So that, that agreement we keep talking about, it almost sounds like we've got the CBA in one hand and another agreement, but they're not. It's one document. I'm coming back. I'm leaving as a patrol lieutenant. I'm coming back as a patrol lieutenant with the same seniority, which is covered under that pay scale. So this is not a supplemental agreement.
I agree, but it is an, I totally agree with it.
But the agreements are already signed off.
That's, that's, that's not true. That is not true. This is a hybrid that we have never dealt with before and whatnot. Once he is no longer an employee of Hancock County on, on, on December 29th and whatnot, the fact he's coming back again and whatnot, doesn't necessarily mean that he's, gets all the benefits and pay and whatnot of his previous position because he, he's now a new employee technically under, under the contract. What we need to do is we need for the contract to understand the retire and return to work policy that we do have in place with the contract. So I disagree with Chris. This, this is, and that's the problem. It's a random policy, first case we're dealing with and whatnot. And let's get it right first because this is no substantial future.
Okay, so there's motion for to put the whole thing off, uh, to a future meeting. Uh, it's been seconded. Uh, is there any further comment, anything new, uh, to add before we vote? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. So motion passes two to one. So.
We probably lose a very good employee.
Uh, it's, it's.
And we've done that before. We established that before. We've lost good employees and that's all of it.
Well, I think.
I'm, I'm tired of your threats too because that's a, that's, that's nothing but a threat. It's not gonna happen. Chris knows that all we have to have is an agreement that we can agree to and he's welcome to come back.
And you had a conversation with him?
Yeah, well.
Um, excuse me.
I have.
Excuse me.
I have.
If you could tell me.
Well, I know.
Excuse me, could, if you would please, um.
I think you need to come back with your agreement.
So, um, what particular pieces, um, let me get a yellow peanut pad of paper.
So I think you need to spell out pay and benefits.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, it's simple. Just that, that agreement.
Doesn't matter what you already started with, except making it clear that he'd be returned to this position at this rate of pay with existing benefits or even spell those out.
Under this clause.
Under that.
Not only, not only, yeah, not only the position, but the assignment. Because it's one thing for him to come back, well, if he come back as lieutenant and the sheriff wanted him to go back in the patrol division, that would be a different issue with him coming back as lieutenant and being assigned to supervise the drug task force.
Well, that would.
We would want to know that.
Yeah, but that would be covered under.
That would be covered in the agreement. And that's what I'm saying. This agreement needs to be very precise and we understand fully what we're agreeing to before we bring this employee back.
Yeah, it just needs to spell out where it's.
So we want, we didn't, we want to see the position, the rate of pay and.
Oh, it's, it's.
Oh, no, yeah. The benefits, the benefits.
Yeah.
No, it's not. And that's the problem. I don't see.
Probably our first is personal. It mentions an agreement.
And in that agreement would be, you would dictate that he's coming back, whether or not he's coming back to his position and assignment, what his rate of pay was going to be, what the benefit package is going to be.
So, yeah, in my opinion, that agreement, there needs to be an agreement because this policy mentions it.
Okay.
I think it's pretty simple. I think we're all arguing, you know, in circles.
No, we aren't. We're not all arguing the same thing, Chris.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay.
I'm going to move to accept and file the ICC monthly report as presented.
Moved in second. Anything to add?
I just wanted to briefly mention our visit from the ministry services vacation bureau back in Illinois. We passed my college.
Oh.
Chris. Moved in second. Anything else to add? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So you can handle this. Press approval, purchase, the replacement copier.
Well, considering that we could buy, um, upper funds, uh, is there a new one available and a new cost?
Uh, it could be available.
Gentlemen, don't you think that with, considering we have access funds that be.
Oh, I was gonna let you finish your statement.
Uh, that was, this was a, basically a program copier rental loaner that came back.
So thanks for trying to save some money. We do have upper funds that could cover the cost of new and that would mean that the likelihood of it lasting longer, lasting longer would be a very. John, at least John and I would like to see if they're back and get a, get a price and bring it back to us for.
Wait, she said basically, I'll get it.
Basically double us?
It's going to have a warranty with it, any warranty.
I agree.
Yeah, Monica.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so we're gonna postpone this item.
Yeah, we're just taking it away actually.
Okay, make, maintenance, monthly report.
I'm going to move to approve the, and file the maintenance, uh, monthly report as presented.
It's moved in second. Anything to add? Your report?
Uh, no.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So you can handle this. Jail plumbing update.
I haven't learned much. Still working on, um, pricing fixtures there. Hope to have something, something before your month, not December, maybe middle of December.
Okay, sheriff steps update to include approval of the L N, L N Busama Elevator Tower Project.
Uh, yes, we're at the plumbing stage. The trenching's been done. The drains for each land that have been installed. The rain's holding up today. The starting of laying the heat pipe for the snowmelt. And we're hoping that may be looking for company maybe next week. We got it before Thanksgiving hopefully. That would be a giant leap forward.
So, but, excuse me, we're talking about the steps now?
Yes.
Steps. No action taken on the jail plumbing situation.
No, at this time, we don't have enough information.
Okay, very good. I'm going to move to accept the architectural engineering services proposals from Louis and Bam for the storefront windows and doors project with a not to exceed limit of $27,000 of such funds to be paid using upper funds. Signature for that.
Uh, yeah, right here. And chair to sign.
And chair to sign? Chair to sign.
Moved in seconded. And this is the cost of the project?
No, this is the design.
It's the design.
And as you, as typical, this is a not to exceed price. So far we haven't. Which, any agreement is to sign.
To, to, Monica, is that, sign this one?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion. I need a second. We ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so they need a generator at Bull Hill, so I'm going to move to approve the purchase of a power plant generator for Bull Hill from CMD Power Systems Incorporated in the sum of $8,954.55 to be paid for using the TIF funds.
Seconded. Moved in seconded. Anything to add?
I did discuss this with Melard. He's okay with it.
How many generators is it?
This is the speed number four.
Okay, just wondering, the old ones boost?
Yeah, same as, uh, we've bought two of those 8 KW units thinking, you know, this is just a little team over running here, but it's the continuous running here with all of that skills. And this was rated for more, far more robust, more like the one that's.
Okay, moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 So you can handle this.
Okay, I'm going to move to accept and file a human resource monthly report as presented.
Any further discussion, Mary Ann, anything to add? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to move to accept and approve monthly bills and warrants as presented.
Moved in seconded. Anything to add? Monica. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I'm gonna move to approve the two thousand twenty-four holiday schedule as presented.
Move then seconded. Anything to add, anyone? All in favor? Aye. Bill?
Yeah, I said, aye.
Okay, so unanimous. Still got five minutes. ACO agreement and then O U renewal.
So I provided you with a draft on that. Just, are you okay if she's sending those drafts to, to communities?
Yeah, it's consistent with what.
Yeah, with what we're doing right now. The only thing I changed was the updated price based on three hundred and increase and using the current IRS rate, but that could change.
Okay.
No action needed?
No action needed, just I'll get them up to community.
I'm gonna jump over the budget matter and whatnot. And I'm gonna go right to the G R R replacement matter and move to approve the G R R replacement bridge letters of support as presented.
Seconded. Move then seconded. Anything to add?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we've skipped over C.
Yeah, and this is the point I'd like to take a break.
Yeah. Do we want to deal with E?
No, see, that's E, we were, somehow E got.
That's, that's fifty boos, about six million dollars.
There's no action needed in this, just the prices.
Well, she was looking to get, right now they're discussing like twenty-two hundred, twenty-three hundred dollars. She's trying to work out with them. They're saying that she's used that, she's saying she's not. And she obviously needs to still mail stuff, so wanted to and suggested our, spend up to three thousand bucks for a line item if she had.
I'm wondering if, you know, we shouldn't, I know a lot of people are moving away from the shiny post machine, they don't use it. That's probably something that we should research if that doesn't solve the problem right now. Yeah, yeah. So we do, it sounds like we do need action there.
What is your suggested action, Michael?
Well, I mean, the only other thing you can do is instructor, like I think you've done with other departments before, is, you know, try and stay within your overall budget. Well, if you exceed it, we'll have to try to come back and address it, so.
We can do that by simple, by consensus, right? But do we?
I mean, it's R V one to C.
We probably oughta, although you didn't suggest some action here.
So she was requesting our, you know, and that would be a guaranteed, obviously, if we transfer three thousand from that and go in. But then, you know, if you don't use that or she gets it back, then you just spent three thousand.
That's something we could do anytime at the end of this one year, right?
Yes.
How could it be done, obviously, at the end of this one year?
Yeah. I think we should wait and see.
Yes, no, it's, it's not gonna shoot, stop any mailings or.
I mean, children will have to continue, I would assume.
Yeah, we'll shoot.
You got a mail, which you got a mail.
Yeah.
I don't have any experience with that, I'm just curious.
I mean, I seem to a degree, but of this nature and her difficulty from what she explained to me is that it's hard getting a real human that can actually commit to something within the EVOs.
That's why I love people.
Yeah. So, I mean, if she could get somebody to adjust that, clarify it, then that way drive the problem by, it's having to make call, web call, email. And having isn't getting a response.
Okay, so I, I don't see any, you're not requesting any.
Well, I mean, she can come back next meeting then again, hopefully she'll have more information. I mean, I requested she come to this one, so she'll probably get a type or something.
Yeah. Well, but just as long as our inaction starts keeping her from doing anything, and I don't think so.
She's on.
She's on.
She's got direction by general.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm going to move to enter in the executive session pursuant to M R S A title one, section four oh five, subsection sixty for union contract negotiations.
Move then seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So before we go in, I, my guess is that there's some, there's some interest in the budget stuff that we're gonna talk about after the executive session, so I don't know, I don't want to waste your time. Is there an efficient way?
Okay.
Can someone call me?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, is that, that works for everybody? Thank you.
Thank you.
They have time.